Order, please rise and face the lights of pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with a routine justice for all. For the audience who didn't know this, it's great. The school board will convene into closed session to consider a fine information compensation performance evaluation that any college employee who votes a government to body of jurisdiction exercise their responsibilities under Wisconsin statutes 19.85 for N1, for NC, and for ND. We have some, we don't have a student council meeting on the agenda tonight, but we have student council members that would like to talk with us tonight. So ladies, you can either use the podium or you can pull up a chair and sit by us whichever you prefer.
Stand there, alright.
Okay. So, we're from the high school student council and first we'd like to talk about some of the things we've done so far. We presented a check for Paula Simon on Tuesday evening. Her son, Andy Simon, was presented the check. The Jacksonport Thanksgiving Day Parade and benefit was a huge success. This year's benefit raised well over $8,000. This is the largest amount ever raised. In addition to a large check to Paula, a portion of the funds were used to adopt her family. We purchased Christmas presents, clothes, a grocery cart, and grass card for the family. We have also voted on the road entering the back parkway and the name of it is now Pioneer Way. Tomorrow, the student council is hosting a snow date and we have planned events for the afternoon. Events include movies, cookie decorating, gingerbread houses, board games, computer games, intervention study hall, dodgeball tournament, and other contests in the gym. We would also like to ask some questions about the school calendar during graduation. So, we have some questions. And our, our main move for our questions is, spring break is not only like a break to go on vacation, but a mental break, especially like junior and senior year, when you have to take the ACTs and prepare for like tests that are important to your future. Most parents plan spring break a year in advance, so that'd be kind of like a thing. When parents are supposed to, when are, what, parents take their children out, usually not during Christmas or Thanksgiving, because that's when they're most spent in time with their family. High schoolers who go on spring break or have to are missing out at the same school, which puts them far behind, especially with taking A P classes. This is not only a student break, but also a faculty break. I know some of the teachers go on vacation too. Having no spring break makes January delay a long time for students. Students who don't have a longer break tend to have like a, a mental, like the capacity for learning is so much and that's a long break from like January to June. Intense finals are even more difficult without like a stress reliever and relaxation period. And we don't really know how the renovation benefits the whole student body, because we know that it affects the elementary school, but not necessarily the high school. And it could also affect the year ban trip schedule and/or the DC trip schedule. So, and we also thought like adding mass to the end of the day or like the beginning of the day could help with time. That's all we had for the day.
Okay. For the audience who doesn't know, they're, they're concerned because Sevastopol may not have spring break in the years 2019...
1920, 2021.
1920, 21 to facilitate the construction. So, the student council has these questions. I don't know if we can answer those all tonight. Some, you know, some of them take a little thought, so what's your suggestion, Mr. Luthy?
I think I could be invited to a student council meeting and answer some questions if they'd like that.
Okay.
Yeah.
That'd be perfect.
The feeling I want to tell you is the summer of '21 is a huge summer because that summer, the new addition will be still being finished, and then the 65 and 98 sections have to get renovated when your kids are out of here, and then all the furniture and equipment and supplies from the 24 and 46 sections have to be moved out of this building, and then those two buildings need to get knocked down, and a parking lot needs to be put in. So, the summer of '21 is, when we met with the construction folks, is really crucial because you may not think they go, I'll do it in five days, they can knock this building down in five days. So, yeah, it's, it's quite a deal, but we've got internal work to do. We'll talk about student council.
Talk about it.
You gonna do it after Christmas?
Yeah.
No, tomorrow.
I do think we want the high school to be excited about this too though, so maybe we should answer that question about what's in it for the high school. The high school will have a new art room, a new art facility. You'll have new science rooms. Middle school will have rooms that are, where the 4K and kindergarten out of there, that'll be the middle school. And I really don't even quite understand what it is, but the fad lab tech area will be fantastic for all of the high school as well. So, be excited about it.
Yeah, yeah, the science we do, tech, all Mr. Sandborn's area, Mr. Carlson's area, and Mr. Kins area, so there's some for all grade levels. So, don't think it's an elementary school project, it's K-12.
Okay. So, putting on the spout, we bounce.
Thank you so much, Mr. Jeff.
Thank you for coming tonight.
And you could stay for the entire meeting if you want, or you could go home.
They're going to study.
They're going to go home and study. Alright, sounds good.
Good for you. Are there any other guests that wish to speak? No? Okay, then we'll look at the consent agenda. Are there any others anyone wishes to remove from the consent agenda? Hearing none of the consent agenda will be approved by consent to include the donations from Jacksonport Advancement Corporation of $500 to the Pyramid Doors, the Door County Community Foundation Incorporated, Ruth and Hartley Barker Memorial Fund, the Arts and Endowment Fund's sustainability grant of $1,100 for the visiting author, Lisa Vera Wheeler, and the Amets Weber Test Post, $51 donation of $100 to the elementary school. So, thank you for those generous donors again this month. Under our rule business, we have the second reading of some policies. We looked at these in previous meetings. In our practices, we go through the second time and give final approvals. So, can I hear a motion for that first policy, 5780?
Move to approve the second reading of policy 5780, student parent rights.
Second.
Questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Policy 6150.
6145.
Oh, 6145. 6145, I missed one.
I make a motion to approve policy 6145, following.
Second. Questions or comments on 6145? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Now, policy 6150.
I'll make a motion to approve policy 6150, tuition paying fund.
Second.
Questions or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Policy 6700.
Move to approve policy 6700, Fair Labor Standards Act.
Second.
Questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Policy 0143.1.
I move to approve policy 0143.1, public expression of board members. Second.
Questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Policy 0167.1.
I'll move to approve policy 6167.1, voting.
J D, you want to repeat the 0167?
Uh, 0167.1, voting. Second.
Questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Policy 0167.2.
I'll move to approve policy 0167.2, closed session.
Questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Policy 0167.3. Wait, wait, wait. 01.67... 0167.5.
Move to approve policy 0167.5, use of electronic mail.
Second.
Questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Policy 0167.6.
I make a motion to approve policy 0167.6, email public access to instruction media center information. Second.
Questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Policy 1210.
Move to approve policy 1210, board.
Second.
Questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Policy 1260.
Move to approve policy 1260, incapacity of district administrator.
Second.
Questions or comments on that one? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. And policy 2416.01.
Move to approve policy 2416.01, parental access to instruction media center information.
Second.
Questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Okay, then we will move on to item D. We have a stipend position brought back with further information.
Uh, this is for the eighth grade student council and the thing we're at the board last time was the motion, was the motion to have it be the same as the high school, which is $434 per year. And researching what the two people that are currently in those positions were paid for chaperoning the dances and activities. Uh, one was paid $20.12 for the year, and the other was $84.36 for the two dances. So, that's what they got paid for out of, out of, at hourly rate for a chaperoning.
What was the total amount they were paid?
One was 2012, $20.12, and the other was $84.36.
And they were looking for two, two people?
They were looking for two, two people.
Two people for?
Five or six kids, correct.
So, my question about student, I have two questions. One, one is, why do they have separate sixth, seventh, and eighth grade student councils? Why not one?
One middle school council, like the high school.
The officers have to be in eighth grade. And two, it's really not a question, it's, all of these, all of these positions that people work at are important and appreciated, most certainly. So, this isn't to say that they're not important and appreciated, but I'm reluctant to bring on another stipend position without having an expectation and job description for it. We've got a lot of them out there that way, and I think we need to go back and kind of look at those so as they change hands, there's an expectation for the, there's an expectation for the stipend and what we expect to happen.
And that they're still valid and working.
Because what you're saying is whoever's currently in each one of those stipends is doing it their manner, and if someone else would do it, would they do it exactly the same or different, and what's the minimum to receive the stipend?
Right, yeah, I would agree with something.
Right. Uh, Mr. Rip, can you explain how middle school has sixth, seventh, and eighth separate compared to the high schools, it's all one?
Yeah, that's a great question. So, it should probably be called class officers. That's what the students are, are doing, is liking class officers. We actually have class officers for all of our classes, grades seven through twelve. In this situation, all those class officers may have a little bit more active roles that plan dances and dance stuff. That's similar though to high school, for example, your junior class will plan prom, your senior class will plan head coming. But you can see the active role that our, that our high school student council takes in the entire student, student body and school district. Middle school tries to do the same thing. Our eighth grade class probably has more responsibility because they're the, we're the oldest in the, in the middle school. Seventh grade's just learning their primary responsibility is just to plan one dance. Eighth grade will plan, plan usually two dances and a class trip and those types of things. But that's not reasonable for any class officer to participate in those activities. Does that answer your question?
It, it does. But it, well...
It makes it sound like the middle school's more a grade level than actually the student council.
More grade level, you know, if you, if you look at high school...
Yeah, it is, it is, yeah, absolutely.
If you look at high school and any of those organizations, whether they're SAD or whoever, it's ninth through 12, and the ninth graders are learning as they come up from the 12th, from the seniors. So, I think if there's, if there's a sixth grade, a seventh grade, and an eighth grade, and if they have two advisors for six kids in the sixth grade and six kids in the, I mean, I think that's, that's excessive as far as cost and, and staffing of that amount of kids. So, maybe it's something that...
If it was restructured like the high school, that'd be different.
Right. Well, then you'd have a group of kids, you know?
I do, I do, excuse me.
Yes, right.
I do, uh, I kinda like it by grade, right? Because that's, as you go through life, you're meeting your peers and team, so I kinda like that class is, because if the middle school, only the eighth graders do all cool stuff, then you just, you know, it's good to get the situators involved out there.
As class, would you call it class officers or class officers?
That, that aspect, I, I think is kinda neat, because it gives the sixth graders another opportunity besides whatever else they do to develop and improve their leadership. Leadership, thank you.
Right. At the high school, they got both, they got class officers and student council reps. Right? So, what I'm hearing is, this is more class officers than, than a student council like the high school is.
Well, part two, I think, is this, the, the discussions we've been having to be responsible while recognizing all the value added time by our great staff, but at what, where you put monetary value on it. And I think that's very challenging, you know, I think, because they're all very important, because all of our kids and whatever their interests are, they're all very different, but they're important. And it, it's hard to put value on that, you know? But at the end of the day, it's, we're spending tax dollars, so we're trying to find that balance. So, what I heard, my, the thing I heard saying is we need good justification so we are able to articulate that. It's, I don't know if that helped you or not, I...
But you guys can make the decision, right? Yeah.
So, what, what do they do now?
Do they just?
They mean every week and they?
They do this gratis, is that part of their job, or what, the teachers? Correct, right? Except for the hours they put in chaperoning dances, right?
It's like, see, it's like class advisors in high school don't get paid. And if they chaperon prom or whatever, 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 they get paid.
Yep.
So, there's class advisors in, in the high school, and that's separate from student council?
Correct.
And the, and the, the staff class advisors in high school are also unpaid, that's just written into a job description? Okay.
And how are the, how are the class advisors assigned?
Uh, I assign them, based on regular, and everybody's assigned. So, we have, we have, you know, four or five staff members per grade level at the high school.
And all the other grade levels are happy with the hourly rate, there's an unfortunate about that. But they presented as middle school student council. Right? Okay. My recommendation is stick with the hours.
And maybe it's something they need to study and look at restructuring it so that it is more of a, you know, I mean, two advisors for six students, I think is the tough.
You could have, uh, class officers at each grade level like the high school, and then have a student council separate like at the high school. And then that would be more of a sixth, seventh, and eighth, and probably officers would be the eighth, seventh, and eighth bears, because all the kids always get a lot to do, you know, and that's, you know, like that comes with the, knowing the ropes, you know?
So, we're taking no action?
We don't approve it, and it stays as it is.
Stays as it is.
Or you can make a motion to deny it, yeah?
Do I hear a motion? Hearing no motion, if you're being as it is. I do think the stipends is something we're having to have to come back and revisit at some point in time, because, again, I feel strongly, there needs to be some structure for each of those positions. Is the committee met again?
We're not, no.
Well, you probably shouldn't.
Oh, yeah. Yeah. Tomorrow. Tomorrow's the student council.
Tomorrow or not.
So, you know, we do appreciate what those teachers do, we just don't be responsible.
Well, the last, we, my struggle with, there are schools that have no stipends. I mean, so I'm just trying to refer me personally as I talk, there are schools that don't have a stipend structure, they, so all the extra work is, I guess, people, I don't know how that, I don't understand that yet. So, that's why I'm just trying, for me personally, is to understand. And we always, we've done it for a long time, and that's great.
They used to, they would wrap that into negotiating, into contract negotiations.
Well, I don't, I, as I talk to some people, like, throughout the community and states and as I travel, and I ask them, so I hope I didn't take statistical...
But I mean, around here, I would believe.
I haven't asked, yeah.
Wasn't some of that formally wrapped into contract negotiations?
Oh, yeah, I mean, you would negotiate, but you would bring X, Y, and Z to it, absolutely, and then there'd be going back and forth, and then some things would make it through and some would be cut, and that was all part of the process.
Okay, we'll move on then to policy 9560, relations with churches.
Can I ask first one to be on the agenda, because the policy says advisors of school activity should do everything possible to avoid conflict with Sunday services, Wednesday evening church activities, and three, any special circumstances, which is their prior knowledge. So, a couple of our coaches have said, hey, what about Sunday afternoon? And I said, well, we kinda have a Sunday service policy here, and they said, well, the services are in the morning. So, I said, well, before we do anything and interpret this different, let me make some phone calls. So, I called Sarah Gavin, who runs the Sturgeon Bay Life Teen and Edge Coordinator for the four Catholic churches, is it? And she says they start at five o'clock and afternoons would not bother her. I also called Saint Peter and Paul next door, and they said if Sarah said that's okay, they're comfortable with that. I know the church I go to, and I talked to a couple of staff members of churches they go to, and it'd be okay for some. Basically, it comes down to gym time and limitations, but the churches I spoke with said that they were all okay with Sunday afternoons as long as they could be at the five o'clock one to make it there. So, we're looking for more gym time for our coaches. And the second part that has increased this is, two years ago, the WIA said coaches can have more contact in the off season, so now, coaches want to get a hold of their players more. So, this would give us another window of opportunity. Our club sports, like the elementary basketball or the, what's the volleyball program? They are allowed to go whenever because they're not a school organization. So, we do have, our students are already involved in that, but, so I thought before we, before I interpret that differently, and it says Sunday services, because we do have, uh, what's on Gordon Road, just on the...
Well, I was just gonna say, the church practice for me, they practice on Saturday. So, I mean, this...
Right, our policy says Sunday, though.
Right, exactly. So, I, you know, that was gonna be my example, because I'm literally across the street. And then there are other faiths that gathering on Friday night's very prominent too. So, I don't, you know, I, I under, we have a gym space issue, and, you know, it's kinda like...
Right, the only, the only concern I have with opening up Sunday afternoons is the student that does go to a church program and then the season rolls around and the coach says, well, you know, you weren't there as much, even though they may not say it out loud, but they have it in their back of mind, I would hope our coaches and...
I think I would respect someone's faith and...
That would be a requirement of our coaches.
Yeah.
I know, uh, just from, from, like, they come to practice late on a Sunday, because they have, like, it's, that's what club volleyball means, and that player comes late and, and the coach respects that, and, I mean, that, I, I think a good coach would respect that.
And there's students who have left practices because they have piano lessons on a set date at a set time and, and things like that? I mean, you know?
I know, but before I changed our practice, I wanted to bring it to your attention, and say, here we go. And I know we've had a musical, the spring play, graduation, all Sunday afternoon activities, so we have had school activities at those times, but I just wanted to be respectful and, so that's what I...
It would be good to be fine afternoon.
So that if it's at five o'clock, we're out in the gym at 4:30, so you're...
Yeah, and if, is it 12:01, they can start, or?
Right.
Because people have different interpretations of things.
Right.
So, you don't, we don't make action that you'll update that policy, that policy update and bring back?
Well, I'm just, I'm just, I'm just interpreting it, and when I interpret Sunday services, I just want to be respectful of what Sunday services mean here. So, in my research, the Sunday services is that all before noon, and then at five o'clock, we have four churches that are affiliated that I know of, and no one else has told me, I haven't called every single school at a church, but I've called quite a few and reached out and finding out there's no problem with that. I know we have had at least three Sunday afternoon activities that other than school sponsored that no one's had an issue with. So, I'd like to open up that window, is what I plan on doing, from noon till 4:30. So, but I don't think the policy has to change because it says Sunday services. Now, since someone's got like a two o'clock church service and I'll change it.
Then they'll change it.
Right, right. But I want to interpret that, okay?
All right, very good. We'll move on to new business then, and we have a presentation by SHEN certified, not legal companies, um, for hearing the audit report. See how the noise gets here.
No, if it was the end of the roll and they just thought that they would use it all.
Overachiever. Come on, that's alright. Glad you're on.
Yeah, that's why I was excited to just get that thing.
Are you changing your name now?
We are. Yep, we're merging into Kilden Larson Allen.
Right, I love that.
The audit team will stay the same, but we have, you know, national resources and all, so.
When is the official change?
January 1st.
January 1st?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, you've got two reports in front of you. One is the bound detailed information from a financial perspective, and the other one is management communications letter, which summarizes the audit results and has some summary financial information in it. And I'll mainly refer to this document, and as we go, if you have questions, go feel free to stop me, or I can take your questions at the end too. So, on the management communications letter, page one, states that the objective of the audit is to obtain reasonable assurance that your financial statements are free of material misstatement, and that your state award programs are in compliance with the state guidelines. If we have done that, you have a clean audit opinion on both aspects of that. So, while we design our audit procedures and perform them, we also consider internal control within that structure, and that results in two significant deficiencies under your financial statements, shown on page two, about halfway down. You'll see preparation of the annual financial report and segregation duties. So, these are repeat findings from last year, and really for a district your size, they are not, you know, unordinary, so. Then, under your state awards, very similar findings, financial reporting for state, federal and state awards, and then segregation duties for those awards. So, the finance, the preparation of the annual financial report, I would say 90% of our clients have that finding in, with the changing GASB standards as fast as they're changing, very hard for someone to keep up if you don't have the resources of a firm that's backed their research and all of the pronouncements. if you don't have the resources of a firm that's backed their research and all of the pronouncements and the new statements and standards and how to implement those and how to disclose those within the financial statement. So that's somewhat mitigated because at the end of the audit, we prepare a draft of the financial statements and provide it to management. And they review them, make any changes that are necessary, and then sign the management representation letter, which is attached at the back of this communication, accepting responsibility for the content of the financial statements. On page three, about halfway down, under qualitative aspects of accounting practices, states that the district adopted the S B statement number seventy-five. And what that really related to was the health insurance that you pay your retirees, otherwise known as other post-employment benefits. And that statement really required that you put the full liability of your O P A V liability on the statements. So just to back up and go back in history a little bit, in two thousand and three, the GASB statement number thirty-four said, we want to make a second set of statements as comparable to what a business's financial statements look like. And that resulted in the government-wide statement of net position and activities, which brought on a lot of your long-term assets and liabilities. At that time, those were mainly like your capital infrastructure and then the related debt on those. In two thousand and nine, the GASB was looking at these post-employment benefits and saying, there's probably a liability out there to record. And GASB statements number forty-three and forty-five then said, here's this liability, but you'll amortize it over thirty years and add, you know, you don't have to record the full liability at this time, but we'll amortize it over thirty years and you record it. But then GASB statements sixty-eight came along, related to pensions. And then you had to record your full share of the W R S, either not pension liability or asset. This year, it's an asset. And so it was very natural for GASB to go back and revisit the O P A V statements, forty-three and forty-five, and say, yeah, let's go ahead and record the full liability related to O P A V. So what that meant for you, it was actually a positive impact. With your new O P A V study, the liability at the end of last year was one point four five million. You went down to one point oh eight million, so. Towards the bottom of page three, states that we had no difficulties in performing the audit. At the top of page four, corrected and uncorrected misstatements. One material adjustment to disclose, which was the capital lease. So there's a revenue related to the capital lease and then a subsequent expense for the, the lease to recognize. So no disagreements with management, and then it refers to the management rep letter. On to page six, we have some summary financial information there. The first number that you'll see there is the general fund unassigned fund balance. And you went from approximately five twenty-five million to almost six million. So you had a positive year by about five hundred thousand. Now, you budgeted for a little bit of a four hundred thousand dollar deficit. I think in looking at your budget to actual performance, you had some savings in operations and maintenance of plant. So there may have been some projects that just weren't as far ahead as what you kind of had planned.
Yeah, we, we waited till South River a bit, yes.
Okay. Down towards the bottom, we calculate what we would consider to be a reasonable fund balance reserve. And we say twenty to twenty-five percent of your general fund expenditures. And really, you know, the basis for that is really the timing of your revenues. You've got two significant sources of revenues that fund your budget, which is your property taxes and then your federal and state awards. And the majority of those revenues are received six to eight to twelve months after the school year is really started. So that's kind of the basis for the twenty to twenty-five percent. What that calculates out to is roughly two million to two point four million. So, you know, you're obviously in very good shape at just under six million. Now, if you were to say, we are so far above that, what would your recommendations be? Just a couple of thoughts on that is, you know, you really don't want to build use of that fund balance into your operating budget. So it would really be a recommendation of the one-time things, whether that was paying down debt or a capital project. And, you know, from a bond rating standpoint, if you were to use some of that fund balance, you want to be able to explain where that fund balance was used so that you wouldn't get down paid. Page seven, a couple of new GASB statements on the horizon. GASB statement number eighty-seven, related to leases, will be effective for your fiscal year in twenty-one. And what that basically says is, there's basically been two sets of leases that have been recorded over the course of time, which is capital lease. And there you recorded asset and a subsequent liability, very similar to what you would do if you took out general obligation debt on some kind of capital project. And then you've got operating leases. I would say the most common kind of operating leases that you see are copier leases. And, you know, those really just have flown through the, the income statement without recognition of a liability on your financial statements. So on your government-wide full accrual statements come twenty to twenty-one, you'll recognize any lease. You'll recognize some kind of asset that you have, an asset for use there, and then a corresponding liability, which just says essentially you've got an asset and liability over the course of three or four or five years, and we're going to recognize a portion of that expense each year. GASB statement number eighty-four, towards the bottom there, accounting for fiduciary activities. If you turn to page eight, at the very top there, it states four bullet points that will be the criteria as to whether a fund falls into a fiduciary activity or is part of the district's own statements. And, you know, I would point your attention to the third bullet point, which says the government does not have administrative involvement, such as determining eligibility, monitoring compliance, or approval of expenditures. So really, the pupil activity funds, if you have a student advisor that is working and signing off, that is an employee of the district and signing off on those expenses, I would anticipate the pupil activity funds coming into the district's financial statements as a special revenue fund. And that would be at the end of twenty twenty. So that's really the relevant point of that statement. With that, are there any questions that you might have?
Are there, so there were those couple of areas that you said, efficient, but not really, but for a district our size. Are, are there any steps that we should take to protect ourselves in that regard?
You know, I would say from a segregation of duties aspect, with a staff as small as you have, there are some things like board oversight, and you're probably doing some of that in terms of signing off on expenditures now. And, you know, maybe looking at monthly financial reports. From a journal entry perspective, if the business manager is the only one creating general journal entries, if you either bring those to the board and have someone issue off on that, or even the superintendent could, if he felt comfortable doing that. You know, general journal entries are the manual process of an accounting system. And typically, those are susceptible to misappropriation if you're going to have some of that activity going on. Not stating that there is, but just from an internal control aspect. So just to have some, a second set of eyes on some of that stuff would be really my recommendation to mitigate the segregation of duties.
And, and that is not to have, mean any reflection on the job that the business administrator does. It's just, do we need to do something to just protect?
Absolutely, you don't look at the person in the position. You look at the position and the controls around the position when we're discussing that, so.
And that would be mostly in like a cash, a literally a cash handling situation, really, I mean, right? Because there would, I mean, there'd be too many checks and balances in the majority of the other areas.
Correct, yeah, I would say that you're accurate in that statement.
What, what clarification on the, the new GASB for the one activity funds? I'm just curious, is that just a matter of reporting? Because it wouldn't go into our, our finance calculation sheet and, right? Is, I'm trying to make a good question here, but so if we're just tracking it or do so these community or these activity groups go off and do fundraising for their activities?
Yeah.
That doesn't affect our per pupil funding and stuff like that?
No, it will not. So if we were to look at, open up your annual financial report, go to, go to page thirty-seven. So on page thirty-seven are your, what they call your non-major funds. And they're aggregated into one column, and then in the front of the statements, you know, you just see the one column. I would suspect that the pupil activities is going to fall back here, and it'll just be a column unto itself, just like your food service or your community service funds.
Any other questions? Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks for the overview.
Thanks for having me.
Thank you. Dave Travis back.
Thank you.
Okay, now we have an action, the resolution of Bren, the issues of sale of twenty million dollars in bond as a bond anticipation note pursuant to Wisconsin statute six seven point one to Bren, Bren one and Bren B. And Mr. Clark from Fairness here. So walk us through this.
Congratulations, by the way. It's tremendous. There's a lot of happy school districts. It was, it was, other than a couple of small, or much as really just a handful of questions, there were a hundred percent successful, and there was two or three, the most successful date that we were able to find, so.
We'll share, we're gonna share.
So there's a couple of things on the judge's side related to, to the next steps. The first one is, is the issuance of a bond anticipation note. Bond anticipation note is equivalent to a construction loan, it's a short-term instrument that will be locked in long-term sometime early in two thousand and nineteen. And talking with the district, this approach was decided on because first, it gives you some money in the bank sooner. In the long term, we have to prepare all the financial documents, go through the rating process, that's about a six to eight week process. This allows you to get some funds in hand sooner and also pay bills or to invest. And through the investment process, see where rates are at. You've been picking up five, six weeks to generate forty to fifty thousand dollars in additional interest, which you can again use for projects. The, the bond anticipation note, if you open up to page two, issue summary, is twenty million. This is obviously not your full referendum amount. But if you can recall way back several months ago, we talked about a phased approach, not only to kind of soften the tax impact, but also to kind of match your construction because there are some IRS requirements in terms of your spend down and things like that. We, we, and we'll, we'll look at that in just a second. So this is the first portion, it's the, it's the, obviously, the majority of the borrowing. The settlement date will be January tenth, two thousand and nineteen. This will be the day you actually, the district will receive the funds. We'll work with the district in terms of wiring. We'll work with the district in terms of setting up some accounts, most likely, because following, we have some companies coming in to try to work with investment of that. We'll work with Carl in terms of getting those accounts set up to house those dollars until you find a more permanent home. We'll also work with the district in terms of establishing the funds. The dollars will be listed in, which will add to your financial statement in the next year. And so, because they need to be in a segregated fund, so either fund forty-eight, forty-nine, those type of things. So we can work with the district in terms of getting that, those things. And we've already had some conversations with the base to that. First interest payments will be July tenth, two thousand and nineteen. We do not anticipate having, it reaching that point. We anticipate locking in the long term, but we, the call date is April tenth. And that's when you'd actually pay off the note with the proceeds of the long-term financing. We just put that longer maturity date in there just in case something would go around in the marketplace. We don't anticipate anything, actually, rates have moved in your favor. These are non-rated. This was, the purchaser of this, of the one giving you the funds is Zion Bank out of Salt Lake City. We do a lot of, of these issues. There's, the, the rate is, is two point eight six percent, but there's no cost associated with it. So, which is, which is great. Again, the, these would be the dollars you actually pay the bills for your project. So in terms of how it fits in the overall financing, if you go to page three, you'll see the first, first, starting from more the left-hand side, you'll see the twenty million dollar ban. Kind of both listed under phase one, then the refinancing. The district did levy some funds this year to go towards the debt, we'd be applying that. So when we actually lock in the long-term financing, the, the long-term debt would be nineteen point five million. Just applying, paying down the short-term note versus adding it to the long-term issue, which would make any sense. But again, you'll have twenty million dollars for project costs. We anticipate doing that sometime in the late January, February, once we get the rating in place and all the documents related to a sale, and we'll talk more about that on the next agenda item. And then the second phase, we'd be looking to take out or issue in, in the spring of two thousand and twenty, the remaining five point one million dollars. What we've done, because rates are very good right now, and actually, we might even revisit this given the recent drop, is we've left some, some shorter maturities to fill in that second phase, take out some of the interest rate risk. But as you notice on that phase, we also pick up an extra year of repayment, so it'll be a twenty-one-year total repayment. During the referendum, we talked as much as possibly a twenty-two or twenty-three year repayment, given where rates are at, we're comfortable that it'll actually be shorter than that. So we pick up the extra year of repayment with the second phase, but yeah, the majority will be the shorter end where you have less interest rate risk by waiting to, to twenty twenty to lock that in. And then we have projected combined mill rate. In terms of the interest rates we're using, the four and a quarter, four and a quarter for both phases, we're, we're below that. There hasn't been any recent sales the last couple of weeks, the bond market kind of shuts down about December tenth to a large degree. But we anticipate coming in well below that level, given the recent, as I made a comment to some people earlier, you've noticed your stock portfolios have fallen, interest rates have fallen as well. So that's, that's good news when you're looking tomorrow. And the other good news is the investment rates in the short end have not come down, they seem to be holding. So from what you want is lower longer-term rates and higher shorter-term rates because the investments would be on the shorter end. And actually, you know, talking with a couple of companies I know you've been talking with, you know, they're, they're talking two and a half to three percent, which four years ago, districts were going to referendum, earning a, you know, a quarter of a percent on the proceeds. So it's quite a change. And again, the uses for those dollars are towards the project. So it's quite a change, and again, the uses for those dollars are towards the project or to offset debt. And so, if you're able to generate hundreds of thousands of dollars of interest, it allows you to make some good decisions whichever way you go, so.
Can you diversify that, that percentage? Can you put some towards debt repayment and some towards project?
You, you can, you can. I will, I will tell you that the majority of those dollars do go towards projects, especially when you get into a renovation, and I know you have contingencies built in, and I think, I think when we get the financing in, in place, especially this majority, and we get off a really good start relative to the tax impact, it might give you a little bit more comfort in terms of maybe utilizing some dollars for projects if we come in better than was anticipated in terms of the tax impact to the voters, so. But, but definitely, I know Little shoot, at one point, they got to the end of the project and they, they used some dollars that they had accumulated to offset the levy for, for a year, just because they felt was, some, the voters had stepped up and they wanted to recognize that, so. That's a decision that, you know, you're, you're a few years, few years away from having to make, but it'd be great to have to make, have, be in the position to make that decision, so.
So, under this item, is, is this revised preliminary private placement memorandum?
Yes.
Is that the signing?
Yes.
Okay, so, in that document, what's the, what's the, there's a largest taxpayers, and then it gives individual, individual, and assessed valuations. What's the?
The, the, the bank, the, the group in the bank that, that we work with has to go to, they have a board that decides whether you're a, cause they're giving you twenty million dollars, and they want to be confident that there's a high likelihood they're gonna get it back. So they have to provide some basic information about the district. It's far less than the twenty-nine page offering document we'll put, have to put together for a long-term document, this was a few pages of some basic information, so that was the purpose of collecting that information.
Okay.
And my, my only question on that is from actually, it says source towns and vast
pool, does this include all, these are only towns and vast pool properties? If, if we have property in another town, is this higher? Are we in trouble in any way?
No, 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 and, and, part, part of that is, when you're dealing with some small townships, they're not as, some of them aren't as responsive in terms of providing information back. The bank was comfortable because we were able to get this information relative, and recognizing the fact that there are some outliers beyond this, but it was a good enough indication of the nature of your, your district, that it wasn't all inclusive.
Our representation is.
Right, it, it, exactly, that's a great word, representation. And we talked about, and we, we talked with the bank in terms of the nature of your district, in terms of the light properties and the residential, some vacation properties and those types of things, so they had a good feel for. But they also looked at prior audits, and they know that, as was stated a little while ago, your, your fund balance is very strong, and that gave them a lot of comfort as well. And we, they understand how the process works, it, it's not, this isn't a long-term commitment, for them it's relatively short, and then we'll be locking in the long-term rates and paying the software relatively soon, and we've done this many, many times, we've been sort of comfort with Wisconsin, how Wisconsin finance works and the taxation, so.
So before we would look for action on that, do anybody have any further questions for Mr. Clark?
The county quite often has, has to come up with the top taxpayers in the county a lot of times for different things.
Okay. So then how do we want this motion to look?
Uh, the, the, the capitalized portion of the top of the resolution, that needs to be reflected in the board minutes, the, the resolution, as you, as you described it.
The revised preliminary private?
No, that's, that's the memorandum, but I was listed on your agenda.
Oh.
Uh, motion by so-and-so, seconded by so-and-so to approve the resolution authorizing the issuance and sale of twenty million dollars.
That whole sentence?
Bond anticipation note pursuant, that, that, yeah. That's all that needs to be, or, that's the motion, and that's what needs to be reflected in the minutes.
Would someone like to make that motion, please?
I'll move to approve the resolution authorizing the issuance and sale of twenty million dollar bond anticipation note pursuant to section sixty-seven point one-two, parent one, parent B, Wisconsin statutes.
Second. Questions or discussion? Carl, we don't have to wait for you to write it out.
Well, I've got it, I'll take it.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion is carried. And then they have the resolution to authorize the issuance of the established parameters for the sale of not to exceed twenty million dollars in general obligation refunding bonds.
I made commotion to approve it, resolution authorizing the issuance and establishing parameters for the sale of not to exceed twenty million dollars general obligation refunding bonds.
Sir, second to that?
Second. I'll make some comments.
Comments for that?
Related to this resolution. It's become a, very common practice for districts to, to adopt a parameters resolution, and, and the purpose of the parameters resolution is, is to provide more flexibility in terms of locking your rates. Traditionally, what you do is you pick a board meeting two months, three months out, and you pick that day and say, okay, that's the day we're gonna lock our rates, and that's gonna be a good day, or it's not gonna be a good day. And then there's that uncertainty. The parameters resolutions establish a list of criteria, which we developed with Carl's very name, the, the districts reviewed, that allows us to lock at rates on a day where we do not have a board meeting, and designated individuals can act then on behalf of the board on that day to lock the rates. It gives you just a broader window, for you to refinance mortgage, you kind of watch, and this is a good day, this is, this is the day to act, versus picking the one day. And I guess one of the better examples is, I worked with Elm Brook many years ago, and they, and this is before it became a common practice, this is many years ago, they sold, passed a sixty-some million dollar referendum, back when sixty million dollars was a lot of money, unlike some of the other referents we see now, but, they sold on the highest day of that calendar year, you know, for rates. Still relatively good rate historically, respect, but on any other date, they would, and, and over here is just giving some volatility to the market, and our ability to establish these types of parameters, it just gives us much more flexibility. Everything was, is run through the district, in terms of the designated individuals, bond calls was involved, all those types of things, but it just provides more flexibility. The other thing with the parameters resolution and this method, is what, there's also, I know some individual, it was Nicola Bank or somebody, some individuals or institutions that express interest in participating and buying some of the debt. We'll be making efforts to make that more doable in this process, to allow individuals if they have interest, or institutions if they have interest to participate. Now, your first obligation is to get the best rate for the taxpayer, but if you can enhance local participation, we always try to, to accommodate that if possible. If we can achieve both those goals, it's great. Sometimes it's doable, sometimes it's not, depending on the objectives of the individuals and banks, but at least they, they'll have a better opportunity through this process. So, those are the two main goals, the flexibility and the local participation, and.
And the whole lot is twenty million, but why it sold off and sold out for what size chokes?
Well, bonds are broken into five thousand dollar increments.
Okay.
Typically, you know, you may get individuals who might want to invest ten thousand, twenty thousand, fifty thousand, they wouldn't call us up. They would, they could call the Baird office, I think Green Bay would be the closest one, the brokerage office, or Raymond James or something like that, and through them, they can submit their interest in terms of the bonds, if, if, if they have interest. We'll, we'll put out the notifications, the anticipated, since it's parameters, kind of the window that we would anticipate, people would indicate their relative interest. When it comes time on that day that we're gonna price, we'll go back to them and say, okay, here's, here's the level rates are, is this something you're interested in, or we're gonna sell it to somebody else, that type of process, so.
Other questions for Mr. Clark? If you're none, then all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Congratulations again.
Thank you.
Just based on some of the, the comments that were presented from Shane, we have many sample monthly reports, Carl, if you want, if you want, I know, there's a lot of things going, this construction's gonna take a lot of your time, but at the point you do start to consider that, we have sample reports, sample different things that we can provide you, if you want to kind of pursue some of those things, so.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
See you again.
Definitely.
Hey, um, you see the safety plan has been moved to closed session, probably would be a display on that, it's for safety. Then we have an action item on the technology one, one devices for the high school, fighting.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it. I'm gonna invite Mr. Towsky to help us a little bit with this, but yeah, of course. I provided, as part of my reports to the board, I provided a, a single sheet that kind of explains the steps that we're going through. I think it's important to realize that there are three main factors that we're, we're focusing on as we unfold with the one-one initiative. It's our goal, and it's the technology committee's goal, and we're really excited about the opportunity to provide each one of our students in grades nine through eleven, an individual Chromebook as of January twenty-first, that's our goal moving forward. Some things we've done to prepare for that in our three goals, as I suggested, the first one is working with our faculty, so if they're right, having the, the equipment, understanding how to use the equipment is really important to us. So we've taken a couple of steps. We started by building their awareness, and we did that on December tenth, we met with our entire high school staff, and we actually gave them a Chromebook so they could take it with them over Christmas break or holiday break. They're using those devices, I see them in meetings, they're coming to, to, and they're gonna have access to them until we, we take them back and give them to kids hopefully in June or November, so that's our goal. But that's been a good step. On January eighteenth, we're gonna spend a large portion of our in-service time, we fully have in-service, but a large portion we spend on building guidelines and procedures for use of Chromebooks. One thing that is going to help us significantly is a new management system that we have installed on all the Chromebooks, it's called GoGuardian. It's a safety, security, software that allows us to ensure that our kids are using them safely, and that they're not accessing inappropriate materials. It also generates reports back to us, so we can see what types of searches are gonna be happening, how they may be using the devices, even time on task when they're using the devices. It also allows our teachers to communicate with our students in classrooms, so there's classroom groups, so that a teacher can send out links to their class, so that everybody can get the same post at the same time. So it has a lot of usability features that will support classroom instruction. Anything you want to add to that, Mr. Towsky? I'm very knowledgeable.
Um, other features, they can do one-to-one chat, teacher to student, student to teacher. So if a student is shy, or a teacher needs to check in without making a scene, they can do that. Teachers are able to do lockdown mode, where they can limit how many tabs a student has open, they can even, there's filtering built in for every single student on it, but teachers implement their, their class time, and during that class time, teachers actually have greater control over the filtering. So if the teacher is, say, giving out a Google form test, they can literally put it on lockdown and never get on that class, can only access that one website, amongst some other really nice quality of life features. I'm very impressed with it. The parents are all able to go very smoothly.
Absolutely. The other thing is that it's really important, we have one management system from the standpoint of classwork, handing assignments, and so we've decided as a school that we're gonna use Google Classroom. It's very common, our kids will be using Google for, forever, and, so, what we don't wanna do is have every teacher interacting with these devices differently, because then our students have to learn a whole different set of expectations in every classroom. So if that's a common expectation, we'll be using GoGuardian and Google Classroom as our platforms. So I'm fairly confident. What we're gonna do though is get started with the, the rollout of the computers on January twenty-first, we're gonna come back on January twenty-second and find out who our power users are as far as Google Classroom, and then do some more in-service during that February twenty-second training.
For sure.
And we know that we have already teachers that have used Google Classroom to great extent, so we feel very confident that that's gonna be successful, so. The second part of this is our parent involvement, and we think it's important to involve our parents and make sure they have all the information they need. These devices will be going home, they will be part of the best students' resources for school, just like a textbook would be. So we've already reached out to our parents, we sent an informational letter out, I think last week or before, just notifying them. Did have a few questions come back, and that was great, we were able to respond to that and maybe spread the word further. So we, as part of our newsletters and mailings, the, the piece that we ask for your support on tonight, or your approval of, is the student-parent contract, and I believe we have to figure that, so that's the, the one item that we're asking for approval. We will have every student and parent sign that contract before they're issued a Chromebook, and we think it's important that we have that in place. The last part, of course, is our student awareness, and our students are, are growing up in this technology world, so they're much more adapted to it than we are, so they, they take, they, but there are certain things that, that we will need to make aware of, and we've, we've just started to promote the project, to talk to kids about it, there's conversations in classrooms. But we do have a student training PowerPoint video that all the students will review with classroom teachers, before they receive the devices on January twenty-first, and then they'll sign an additional contract on the care and maintenance of those devices and appropriate use. So it's, it's a, a process that our teachers are gonna roll out together, rather than Mr. Towsky and I standing in front of the whole student body, we're all involved, and setting those expectations together, and that hopefully will be successful that way, so. Any questions? I know this is a good initiative that we're excited about.
It's not a question, it's a comment. There's a lot of people that recognize putting technology and kids in is very important. There's only a few that realize how hard it is, so I wanted to thank the admin team, and the teachers that have volunteered, and Mr. T. to do this. It's a lot of work, folks, and it's pretty cool.
Well, it's such a thoughtful process, I mean, it really, it sounds like you thought about everything. I was sitting here listening to you, thinking, I'm, I'm wondering, as a, as a, as a parent, if, if the kids are going to be in a position to share that with the parent, because, you know, sometimes we don't, we don't know the technology, and so, I, I appreciate the fact that you're circling back the kids and the family together.
Do you have a question, Carl?
No, I just have a comment on it. With this Chromebooks that they have, there is also a, what's called a mobile device grant, and I will be getting an email, I went, I watched a webinar on it earlier this week, in January, I will have to go in and fill out, apply for the grant, and what it is, you get a hundred twenty, up to a hundred, not to exceed a hundred twenty-five dollars per freshman student from the year before. So I had to, when I did a third Friday count, I had to give them what our freshman enrollment was, eight, seventeen, eighteen. With those numbers, we can get up to a hundred twenty-five dollars for each, or per, per child, to go towards, and you didn't have to show, you don't have to show, you have to maintain that you actually used it for mobile device. Well, with this purchase that we have, we've got that covered, and this is a five, this is a five-year, it's not a lot of money, but it's offsets and a part of the process, and it's a five-year plan that this will go through. So, in the future, anything else that we have coming up, we need to kind of look, okay, we tried to spend this much to get this much, you know, back, for a grant back from the state, so.
Awesome. Do you want to talk about the individual devices, and then the carrying bag, and the insurance?
Yeah, sure thing. So the actual devices we're getting are HP G eleven, or HP six G elevens, they're education editions, they're built a little more rugged. We got value cases for them, so every Chromebook comes with a bubble case, that's got a big pocket for a charger and like a carrying strap. We have it set up, so actually the devices go in the cases, and you never need to take the device out. All the parts for charging and the USBs and the headphone jacks are all open in the case. Also, on top of that, we have a three-year accidental insurance policy for any single device. We're literally, as long as the device isn't completely lost, we can call up HP, get a box delivered, send it in, get it replaced. Yes. Of course, we do have policies in place going home to parents, that students will be charged to offset the cost of the insurance policy.
Yeah, on your form, that's the second bullet, twenty-five dollars for the first event, fifty dollars for every event thereafter, because we thought the first time should be a little lighter, but.
Yeah. Any other information from Mr. Lupe, Mr. Bear, or Mr. T?
I just, we've been meeting with our technology team every week for the last couple, probably months. And it's wonderful to work with a great team. Mr. Hovtalski has done a wonderful job. So this is really exciting for us.
Any other questions from school board members?
I've got two more comments. January, we'll bring them, we'll bring them in the bag. We should have brought that tonight. Oh, I could, I could... No, that's fine. And then we're still in discussion of when students... Because they'll, they'll get it issued to them when they go home for summer. They'll come back to the school. Steven will do updates on it, clean them up, whatever, whatever he does. And the same device will be issued to students in the fall. And I would like to see when a student graduates here that they have the opportunity to purchase their machine because for some of our lower-end kids, low-income kids, that might be the device they take to college or to tech college or the real world for them. Others will get something brand-new from mom and dad. We don't even have to worry about them, but this will help our other children out. And they might say, hey, I want that device. But I think we need to tier that because the current juniors will get a newer machine than the freshmen that are. So they should pay more. Yeah, it should appreciate over the three years. And then after that, we just have to keep buying for the incoming freshmen. And then the Chromebooks on the carts will get moved down to middle school and high school. So it's all going to flow.
So the current seniors are not going to be getting one. But the next year's seniors will get one. Just because we're only going to be having...
Juniors will get one this year.
Juniors will get one. Yeah. And then, yes, the incoming freshmen, they'll be getting one. And then all high school will have it. Yeah, just as a test run, we had to start somewhere. Maybe it wasn't worth it to roll this out for one semester when, again, a lot of seniors already had laptops or something else set for college.
I have one more comment, if I may. And you may have handled this, but I just learned this in my own fast. As you, I maybe you have this covered, but as they turn them in and you do any refreshing or cleaning up over the summer, I recommend that you have a very diligent method of keeping the students' data, their private data, you know, their work and stuff like that. So it would be, it would be not nice. It'd be a bad thing if I lost all their freshman and sophomore data because that summer it got cleaned out. And I just, so... And maybe you have that already, but just make sure. And maybe give this instruction to the kids before they turn them in. Because that's really important to these guys nowadays and the girls.
It happened to teachers a few years ago and it was kind of devastating.
Well, I remember that.
The best part, so Chromebooks are basically, they're run Chrome operating system. So basically, anything that can happen in a Chrome browser, that's all it can do. So they have a 16-gigabyte hard drive on it. But using a Chromebook last year when I was still just an aide, it's very hard to actually download things directly to the device because you're doing most of your things in Google. So most of it is saved on Google. The nice part, you do bring up a good point because then when summer comes around, I can shoot out like district-wide emails saying, hey, kids, I'm going to be resetting all of your Chromebooks. Make sure that if you have anything important saved, you back that up to your drive.
We, you know, it's common in this business too because, hey, we're wiping some stuff. I'll just begin. So I just, please put that on your planning.
Yeah, no, thank you. Yeah, for sure.
Then we'll look for a motion to approve the contract that Mr. Bear referenced. I don't have to pull up in front. Does anyone have it in front of them? The agreement on that.
I move that we approve the parent student contract for the one-to-one computer implementation.
A second. Questions or discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Second exciting thing of the night. Then we'll move on to the Wisconsin Association of School Board Resolution, which will be taken up at the school board convention, January 22nd through 25th, or whatever that is. Did anyone have questions about the resolutions, individual resolutions, as you read through them?
If I could just comment a bit as the delegate to that. Some of them are pretty straightforward. Like the first one is just a technical resolution and a lot of it has to do with the fact now that Act 10 has occurred. So we need to make some changes there. I think there are some very good ones for us here as a district. Resolution 1903, the student poverty and revenue limits certainly would be helpful to us. 1905, the funding for gifted and talented programming. 1906, competitive grants. 07, special ed reimbursement rate. That rate has not risen for a long, long time. I think that would be very helpful to us. The Common School Fund. We do get some library money from that, which is helpful. Reading interventions, private school voucher funding. All of these, I think, are relevant and would be helpful. The special ed vouchers that go to private schools. Again, it's taking money away from the public schools. I think some of those are helpful. The nicotine and vaping is a big thing right now. Mental health revenue. I think there's some excellent ones here. Trauma-informed care, school safety, early childhood. DPI licensing of clinical counselors. And state funding for the early college credit program. I think really some good positive ones here. So unless you have some objections, I would certainly want to support those.
I didn't know if there's another observance day. We had all those observance days in our classes. There's a new observance day.
Oh, we have that?
I can't remember what it is.
We can fix that in March.
I didn't think that was as relevant, maybe the special ed funding.
I have a question about the gifted and talented programming resolution. And maybe not so much to the resolution, but it says, "Current Wisconsin law mandates that each school board challenge that all gifted and talented pupils enrolled in the schools get access to a program for gifted and talented pupils."
That's an area that we need to address.
That's next year.
Yeah, that's...
Because we don't have that right now.
We have pockets of activities and events we do, but not a uniformed working.
But we don't have any identified gifted and talented. It's kind of a voluntary, okay?
One kid in third grade and fifth and stuff.
Well, I know why, right? To be a college graduate, I'm not here. Okay, that was my, that was my initial question. I was looking for a motion, but if you have further questions or comments, go ahead.
And part of that has to do with the fact that there has not been funding there. Or gets it.
Yeah.
So unfunded policies are unfunded policies?
One of the questions I was just going to ask is, you know, it goes into the voucher program. Is it safe to assume there was wording on this last year as well? Is that something they're going to include pretty much every year because they want to oppose it?
Yeah, there's, there's a history there of it.
Okay.
Yeah. And there was a desire to have it on the tax bill that we all get to say how much of our tax dollar is going into the voucher program. But there were people who were opposed to that.
Add another thing to the tax bill, just like...
Yeah.
Another thing we got to report to the state. Yeah.
So that's pretty controversial.
So is that information available someplace? Someone wanted it?
Yeah.
Okay. So if any other, if there are any other questions or comments, we'll look for a motion to have the delegate vote on the motions in the best interest of Sevastopol. I think that's what we usually do.
I would move to have the delegates vote in the best interest of Sevastopol on the WASB resolutions.
Further questions or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Then we have the high school course description book for 2019, 2020, all ready.
Thank you, Mrs. Bear. Appreciate it. Just like every week, we try to prepare a course. We prepare a course description book so that our students can plan for their future. This will be part of our registration process. We'll start early in January. The only new courses in here are approved by the board and the number. Everything else is similar to last year with the exception of some description changes as our curriculum course changes. There's a few changes to the description itself. But generally, the only other expect, the only other change I can anticipate is if we are able to certify more courses for cash programming or dual credit or that type of thing. Existing courses in state will be able to have that dual credit option as well. Any questions that I can answer?
If not, take a motion to approve the high school course description book for 2018, final.
I make a motion to approve the high school course description book that approved in 2018 to 2040, school year.
Questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Then we have a first reading of policy number 3131, reduction in staff.
I'm handing over the current 3131. And the reason this is on is it's relevant because as our fourth or fifth graders move off, our fifth graders will become two sections. Sixth graders will have one less position for elementary next year. And the current policy back in 2012, when the language was selected, it says on the fourth paragraph, "Selection of staff reduction once positions have been identified, will be based on seniority." And that should have left when Act 10 occurred. So, well, it should have, Act 10 occurred in 2011. And then depending when your last contract expired, then it should have gone back. So Neil had choice language and so we've got that sitting here now. And I ran this past Mary Gerbit as well. Because I want her opinion on this bunch of Neil's.
Can you hear a motion to approve the first reading of policy 3131?
I move we approve the first reading of policy 3131, reduction in staff.
A second. Either questions or comments regarding the content of policy? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Finally, we move on to reports in the districters say. Mr. Hills.
Good evening, everyone. As I mentioned in my report, just hard to believe that we are already through the winter break. It's going by very quickly. But usually that's an indication of how well we've been. It's been going very smoothly. And so again, I'd like to reiterate something I've shared in the past that working with the staff that we have is tremendous. The parents have been supportive and the students are wonderful. So I'd also like to wish all the board Merry Christmas and Happy New Year. We had the winter concerts and they were very entertaining. It was fun getting an opportunity to participate in those. It was nice that she ended thought of doing that and including us in that. Later this evening, I have a couple of new hires to bring forward. The part-time library aide formerly, bring her forward, as well as an elementary secretary position that we will be filling. We have NAEP testing in January. And our fourth grade was selected by the National Assessment of Educational Progress. It's a nationwide test given by this organization. It chose Sevastopol and picked 50 of our students to be able to give that to. Half of those will be doing a reading test. The other half will be doing a math test. Those children were selected randomly. And this is Margaret. We have some additional notes to share about that as well. Also something that our staff is doing, taking a look at the state test scores in a report card and trying to do some assessment on ways that we can work on that. One area that we can really work on is closing gaps, especially as it relates to our economically disadvantaged students. So staff is starting to take a look already at some of the patterns that might exist and to see why those patterns are there. And if those patterns are something that just is an anomaly or is this something that is an ongoing thing and something that we can address. So we'll be taking a look at those in the coming months. Food drive was very successful. We received a couple of checks as well. We took the money from those checks and worked with Econ of Foods. They are able to do gift certificates and they can make a note on there so that those gift certificates are not used for anything other than food purchases. So we've been able to give those out to families as well. I know the high school head, I'm sure Mr. Bear will share some additional details from their end, but they started delivering some of their food today. We will do that tomorrow on our end. We also received a donation from the AmVets Post 51. To my surprise, it wasn't something that we expected at all. And they showed up to give us a hundred-dollar check so that we can continue our efforts in responding to our veterans and making sure that we recognize the great work that they have done for our country. So Spelly B, we did the first round and we're able to select some students for moving on to a broader competition. That competition will be held in January. And then from there, that will be a regional competition. So the level represented from our school will be able to attend that. Our in-service plans in January. We planned on providing some more training for the science program. We purchased a new textbooks last year. And this will give our teachers some additional insights into how best to utilize that. That day worked out best because it just involved so many people trying to find some time that we could pull subs. It was difficult to do. So that day worked well. In addition, we will be working on some mental health issues at the start of that day. Also, one additional side note, Stevens Health and Amy Lautenbach and Brooke Tank. They took a look at a program that allows us to change basically the face of our report cards. The information behind the scenes will stay the same, how teachers enter that information. But the face will look a little bit different and it allows us to more flexibly change those things. So if there's something that we want to add in to create more consistently across the grade so that as students are getting those at home, parents continue to look at the same information presented the same way over the years. A good example would be fifth grade where they have band grade. And currently, to be able to add that grade in is very difficult to do because you have to go back in and do HTML and some other things. This will allow us to do that more flexibly. And the fifth grade then can be a little bit different than the other report cards. In the report, just a few upcoming dates. And that concludes my...
Questions for Mr. Hills? I was no, I opened the door the other day. They still do, they still bring backpack buddies. The guy came in with a big cart of those little bags that go in the kids' backpack. Great service by the people, both my people. This is Margaret.
Yeah, good evening. I'm happy to report that the special education audit we successfully passed. It took a long time to get that coveted letter.
Frame it.
You know, more importantly, you know, the special education team really learned a lot from that process. It was really, really valuable. So as much as people, you know, were dreading is the wrong word, but you know, just kind of anxious about the process, it was really valuable for all of us to go through that as a team. So we learned a lot and we are happy that it is behind us. So I want the board to know that on January 4th, we're doing the first of two child finds and developmental screenings. So that is where we reach out into the community and find our youngest Sevastopol, you know, pioneers. They come in and they get screened to come into pre-K. So the first one is happening right when we get back from break. Next year, my plan is to have that in October. So there's earlier in the fall and then later in the spring. But my first year in this position, you know, just kind of figured out. But definitely have to start the second one earlier. Community program update. We are, registration is closed at this point. And there's over 50 community members that have registered for programming, which has been really, really wonderful. Quilting is the number one biggest class that people have signed up for. But Sarah Brand is really optimistic and said, we'll take them all. We'll do, because, you know, they want to do it. We encourage her to think about two a night. She's like, no, I'll keep them all. So really exciting. And there was a lot of people also interested in that felting. So last board, at the last board meeting, I didn't really know what that was, but there's a lot of people who are interested and want to know what that is. a lot of people who are interested and want to know what that is. So, it's really exciting. So, I thanks to Ann Hughes for her help, the behind the scenes to get that all organized. A district assessment coordinator update, want you to know that the access test for our English language learners is underway and going really, really well. Ms. Saunders and her team, you know, they're gonna get done this testing ahead of schedule, which is just really nice. To add on to what Mr. Hiltz said about the NAEP exam, learning a lot about the NAEP exam. On January 3rd, we will be meeting with the third grade team, fourth grade team, to inform the teachers a little bit more what that is. And then on January 11th, I have my official phone call with the NAEP coordinator, who will give me all the information that I just know to pass on to principals, students, parents. But all the parents have been informed about the test, letters went out, all accommodations for all of our students have been all set up. So, we're slowly, we're slowly getting there. But the test is January 29th. So, also, special education team is hosting a literacy night. We're really trying to get the word out, how this all happened, where parents actively asked us to help them with more literacy, reading strategies that they can help with their students at home. So, I have three of our reading specialists who are coming in on January 15th from 5:00 to 7:00 P.M., and we're gonna be putting on some literacy strategies, helping our parents understand how to decode different words and read multi-syllabic words, reading comprehension strategies. So, we're really trying to promote that. So, just to really strengthen that homeschool connection. So, that's happening on the 15th. So, I'm real thankful for Diane Jenkins and Callie Asher and Tricia Dufat, as they've helped spearhead the first of hopefully many opportunities to reach out to our parents. STRIDE program is going really, really well. We are in our third week of our provider coming in and actively helping our students. So, we have many, many students on our waiting list. So, right now, there's eight students, but I'm getting phone calls at least twice, two, three times a week for another student to get their paperwork started from. So, it's a really good, and I wish we had our provider for longer, but our Sebastopol community really has taken hold of it. So, I'm happy to report that kids are getting the help that they need. And then finally, I wanted to add that the special education intervention process did not go as fast as I had hoped with all the other things that were happening, but I'm still in the process of organizing our tiers of intervention. So, that is something that I'm still currently working on. And that is all I have for tonight.
Questions for Mrs. Margaret?
The STRIDE program, so you have eight kids, and that's all you can take at this point, and everybody else is on the waiting list?
That's a really good question. Right now, we have a therapist for only four hours a day. One day a week.
One day a week, four hours.
Four hours. So, we are continuing, I am, I am.
So, you're triaging the.
Yes, so I'm actively telling our provider that we have more kids. When can we increase? Because with the kids and, you know, the students and the families that are just reached out this week, she easily has a full day. And we, and to answer your question, a little bit is triage, right? What are the greatest needs? And, but it's, that's really, really challenging for me, because each one that's filling out an application has a need. So, that's the hard part, you know, and.
Just giving them to fill out an application's step, and then.
It is, and now it's all done. Our parents' signatures are there, and they're ready to go, and we don't, we have to say, "Well, at this point, I'm gonna do my best to get you in." One of the things that I have started doing is offering that these students potentially could need our service provided somewhere else.
Right.
Right, so if you can't, if there's no room in Sebastopol, please communicate with the clinic and see when they can go there. So, right now, I don't want the services to stop. No one does, or nobody wants to wait. So, you know, so I'm giving parents advice, if there's no room right now, how to have access to our provider and the program. But yeah, she, we, she, we could have her full time for that day.
And she has an office right now, isn't she?
She does, in the high school conference room is her, her office, where she has all of her materials.
Same place within her school, there seems, is on a different date?
You know, I'm just thinking if there's any extra space.
Other questions for Mrs. Margaret?
I just have one thing to comment on, Mrs. Margaret. She went through a budget class, and she took me to task, had me learn a lot of things that I am still learning, and it was very challenging and rewarding to work with Mrs. Margaret on that class that she did, and read through her final paper, and she did well, and she took me to task a few times, and we collaborated, and we learned, we both learned in that class that she took, so thank you.
And I appreciate it too, because I wouldn't have been able to answer all those questions without him. You know, it really was the beginning of a really good collaboration for special education funding, because it's quite an enormous topic. Right, so.
Yes, yes. And there's the reporting that has to be done with it, it's like, my God.
Good. Mr. Bear?
Thank you. I have some specific things that I want to start with, just comment on STRIDE for a minute. I'm so thankful that Mrs. Margaret has taken that passion and continued our efforts to do that for, because it's essential for our students to have that opportunity to act here. This is something that I care deeply well, as I did care for all of our kids at the start of many, many years ago, and I'm happy to see it come to fruition, and I'm happy to look at Mrs. Margaret, so thank you. I'd like to also wish the board a happy holiday, because this is a very special time of the year. As an administrative team, we are coming to Salwar tomorrow with our staff, so we've invited all the staff in the home classroom. We're all going home tonight, cooking a variety of different things. Except for Mr. Lakey, he said that. He likes to be cooking.
Really? Could be contractor, whatever true that is. It's not true.
But no, we're excited to celebrate not only with our staff, but our students tomorrow. There are a number of activities going on from the snow day activity, which is incentive-based. We have intervention opportunities and study honor opportunities, but in addition to that, we'll be celebrating and having some fun with the kids. Our middle school students will be going to the new Spider-Man movie. It's an animated movie that we're going tomorrow. They love it, to be able to get out of school, go to a movie, get popcorn, they really enjoy it, so we're excited. A few other student activities, assemblies that happened recently that have been very powerful. The first one is Challenge Day, and it was an amazing day, and I gave, in fact, some survey information from that. But I just want to read a couple of student statements, and I'm sure you have already, but maybe our community hasn't. These are from our students, seeing that no one is alone, and that we are facing our problems. A huge misconception amongst teenagers is that what's happening in our lives is only happening to us. This activity really made me realize that the problems I struggle with are okay, to talk about, and I am never alone in anything that I go through. I realized that none of us are alone in what we are going through, and that we have a ton of support parents at Sebastopol. So, that was really powerful. Not only that, the results show that every student that went through the activity wanted to make changes in the way they interact with their peers, with the exception of 6.20%. So, a very small percentage didn't find that valuable, but the rest of the students did. And I had a lot of great conversations with the kids and parents after the activity that said it was great.
Really positive feedback from, you know, kids. I've never heard great, you know, that they really enjoyed their, like, oh, it was really cool. I was thinking this and the Maize Day have been huge positive things this fall for the kids, that they, you know, really had some positive outcome from and participation, you know, and sometimes they go into it, go, "Oh, what's this gonna be?" And came out of it, like, really excited about it, so congratulations.
Thank you. And last year, the board may know that we did approach and resolve concerns in our school district, and that, that is something that we, we worked very hard at, and this year, we are, we're approaching less, because we changed this summer, and we said we need to approach it differently. And so, we continue to do that enough for those opportunities. But that was never been possible with a number of donations from our community. Challenge Day is an expensive venture, but Door Conning Medical Center, Door Conning United Way, the Ellen Helm Foundation, the Little Eddie Cup, Rover North, and a few private donations for all the parting that happened, so that was pretty amazing. The other thing that I want you to be aware of is vaping is on the increase, not only in our community, but in the state of Wisconsin and nation. We have done a lot of things recently to address that issue, including I've worked with staff and we've been able to do two staff trainings now, so that they have additional information that can identify resources or talk to students about the dangers of vaping. We also brought in Mike McGowan, who did a wonderful job speaking to our students specifically about vaping, and we also received a grant and purchased a new curriculum for our health classes. So, we are trying to address that problem as it arises, so we're doing, staff's doing a great job with that. In addition to that, annually, we meet, pack up our conference meets on our coaches handbook or the meat on our code of conduct, basically. It was a great conversation this year, I wanted to mention this, part of our conversation, a big part of it was about mental health. And we think about our athletes and the exercise that they participate in, but all of our school districts are seeing that not all our athletes are following sports through. We have fewer seniors than freshmen. And so, we're wondering if the stress of, of school and other activities is causing them to drop healthy activities like athletics. So, now we're asking or looking for opportunities for our coach, coaches to address mental health with our student athletes as well, so we can keep engaging in healthy physical activity, because we know that that helps them process and work through problems. So, that's exciting to see. School activities, the food drive, Mr. Hiltz already talked about that, but I just want to say we, we refit that this year too. We did it different than years past, and we, we used an activity called Block the Door, and it was really cool. They blocked the door, they had an opportunity to change the class instruction for that day, agreed upon by the teacher. But we got over 1,200 items for our food drive. It was 64 paper boxes, 64 paper boxes. It's the most we've ever collected, and it goes right back to our families here in our community. It was just amazing. And also, the kids had to use bigger items to block the door, which is kind of cool, but we got more boxes of cereal, things that they want, maybe not less.
Cans of beans.
Cans of beans and rotten boons. It was good, it worked out absolutely great, a fun activity. And our student council, I already mentioned the parade. Another thing we do this time of year is cheer grams. Our kids write cheer grams to each other, and with the street that goes tomorrow, that's a really positive thing. Our happiest holiday. The other thing we worked on is our ACT data retrieve. We are, on January 4th, gonna have our mentor meetings with our students. We have staff members that are assigned individual students, so we're gonna start to contact the students and parents and put our plans in place for that. And then our boot camp will take place on February 9th and February 16th. Let's see, we talked about student computer rollout, January 18th, staff development. We have department meetings, mid-year SO reviews, that computer training, and then semester class preparation in the fall, December 30th. And the student council mentioned the role name, which is find your way. So, thank you. Any questions?
No, you're in, it's okay. Thank you very much. Good stuff. Happy new.
In the board packet, you have a letter from Julie Davis that was sent to me, and I hope I forward it front to you, but if you didn't, you have a hard copy. Boys and girls club has found two donors for funding for renewing the bus service in January, starting the second semester, for Monday, Tuesdays, and Wednesdays. And Tracy Botman is looking for funding for the other two days of the week. Cobusson is having difficulty finding bus drivers, they're down a couple drivers already, so that's the, that's the next hurdle. So, they're hoping on the 21st, they can do Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, but he's down a couple drivers, so it comes down to having a driver for that, that's at no cost to the school, so that's, that's, that's nice, yeah. So, hopefully, they can find a bus driver. Weighted grades, the committee has met twice, this last Monday we met. Each committee member was told to find a district and research it and find out what their practices are. I contacted 10 districts, and we found out about half have weighted grades and half don't. And it was interesting, though, why they do and why they don't. Some have a five-point scale, some go up to seven-point, oh, they have different criteria. This is an all-part report, that this district's with weighted grades, the colleges unweighted grades when they have admissions. Some districts have moved away from a valvatorian, salutatorian system to a Magnum cumulati system. It's not the focus of the committee, but they end up being a byproduct of what we're finding out. And each department has now identified a couple courses that they feel should be weighted if we move in that direction. So, we'll get it back together in January and continue on. And, but, any questions about that? Okay. And the financial summary, I've been having for the staff this year, so they can use their money to the best of their ability. We've had a ring from power of attorney and wills to student loan forgiveness and flex spending. And after we come back in January, there'll be programs on saving for retirement, no matter what point you are in your career. And then when the WRS statements come out in March, April?
April.
He says they're April, I think they're March, but I think he might be right, but I don't know. Whenever that is, we're gonna have those W number benefits come out and explain what those statements mean, because everyone always goes down the line, whatever, says, "Well, that's what I'm getting," and that's not the whole picture. So, so we're just trying to get our staff. And then on Tuesday, Cindy Sue and Lisa and I met with Aaron Melfazuski from CISA 7 about our strategic planning. We're looking at establishing a strategic team member, a team, a committee of 25 people, which would be board members, administrators, teachers, support staff, parents, students, and community members. And it's a little bit of a commitment, because we need them for two hours on the evening of Thursday, January 31st, and then all day Friday, February 8th, Saturday, the 9th, and then the 15th, from 8:00 to 5:00. And we would like to have a teacher from elementary, middle school, and high school, and a specialist or exploratory teacher, and mix it up, and get a few upperclassmen, but maybe not seniors that won't be around in the fall, because then after the strategic planning team comes up with goals and objectives, then those will be turned over to action teams, which will work on their initiatives and bring it back to the strategic planning team, you know, three, four months down the line. So, the seniors would probably be out, so you want the sophomores and juniors that they're available when they come around. So, we came up with a list of community members and parents potentially to be on there. I think it's gonna take individual phone calls to get these folks to make this commitment to studying what we want to do in the future and the direction we're heading. We know which way we're heading building-wise, but this is more broader than that. And I think we gotta, we gotta make sure we get all segments of the, of the community, but we gotta keep it to a manageable group of 25. And I think we gotta make sure we're broad, so I think we need some assistance and.
I think this is like the CFAC, where board members are asked and provides names of people.
We submitted a bunch of names, and then, yeah, we all submitted so many names, yeah, that might be.
But I think then they ultimately send out a note to all the community, saying, did we say?
We did, the CFAC, with the CFAC, we said, "Anyone that wants to serve can serve with this."
Well, I think we could clarify that, which is say, "Let us know if you're interested, but yet there still will be a limited number, because then you can find out." And then, like, so, like, you made a comment, you wanted to recognize, represent the entire community, so if we have one population overrepresented, well, we aren't gonna take that many, right? So.
Or we could, we could each submit like we did last time, so, I mean, we came up with over 90 names, I think, last time.
Yeah, last time was over 90, that was some individuals. We also did do the mass mailing, but I, I don't know if we.
We don't have time.
Have time to do a mass mailing, no, I think it's gotta be. And I think for something like this, it might take individual phone call to explain more with the strategic.
So, if you all, if you all come up with those, if you all come up with those names, send them to Mr. Lukey, send him a piece of contact information, and what that person's walk in life is, because again, we're looking for parents, we're looking for community members, we're looking for maybe past students, we're looking for people out of the trades, we're looking for, you know, business owners, professionals, and non-school birds, because they're gonna be on.
Well, yeah, it's kind of intense up front, right?
And pick, and pick people that worked on the CFAC, because we don't want to be saying, "Well, they pick the same people all the time." Not that those people, some of those people wouldn't get graded by.
We want, we want to make sure, and like, we have now subcommittees for the building project, for teachers for elementary and middle school, high school. It'd be nice if we could broaden our staff as well, and say, "Okay, if you're not on those," we have plenty of people volunteering being on those. If we could branch out and get more folks involved, it is gonna, they're gonna go up two Saturdays and a, and a Friday. Hopefully, we let out, you know, community members that are working can get one day off to come help us out with this, you know?
You guys have, or at that meeting, you guys already have, or from here, a few talking points about what the strategic plan is, so everyone knows what they're saying, two people they talk to, or whoever.
Yeah, we've gotta be able to explain this.
I'm just following up on your point, is maybe to explain what strategic plan means, because it may mean something different to everybody else, so whoever's making those calls should have something put together that.
Aaron said he would draft something. And we need people for the action teams later on, too, that will be as big a commitment or as stabilized a commitment, they'll be able to set their own timeframes. They'll be able to set their own timeframe, so that's why we can't put everybody on the poor team here because the strategic planning team, because we need people for those others.
We, Cindy said something to me the other day about opening up the board members and being inclusive, and I, it resonated with me a little bit because I went back to Logan, we really never picked the committee, we had some research, but we didn't pick the committee. And Dave and I and Sue have had an opportunity to serve on a true steering committee with a, you know, bigger commitment. So I think we should open it to those board members that haven't served on that kind of steering committee to see if you, if you can commit to this or if you can't commit to this. If you can't, don't feel badly about it, because sometimes these things don't all fit into our lives. But if you want to, anybody that would want to serve, let me know by January second. And if we get more people than we need, we'll look for a diversity among the board, because we did have a diversity on the CFAC. We all have different interests, different backgrounds. And establish three people on the committee for that.
So when we come back in January, the, or possibly if I get together, we'll do some work on that, right?
So think of your names while you're working around this Christmas holiday. John, and, and we'll need some parents and probably administrators or teachers are the people that can...
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
That's my question, are you about to offer names too?
Oh, yeah, we'll talk a lot, yeah. We'll talk in the team and then we'll have, yeah. Because we already talked about administrators. Aaron and Melissa and I would be on the strategic plan, but we can't hang on to Adam's talents for the action teams. We got kind of, we can't spare everyone too thin, you know, we gotta kind of help them both.
We can take in hundreds of names, because for the CFAC, we had ninety names and we got thirty people. So we could use seventy-five or eighty-nine again.
Can I go back and ask you about... Kind of, just felt that benefit, but back to the weighted grades.
Okay.
Pursuing this, could you, could you kind of capture, and maybe you are, you know, kind of pros and cons? You know, and a lot of times in the past, I would say people who are against it, make them do the pros, you know, just, because at the end of the day, whatever that decision is, I think we would all benefit from seeing a full set of pros and cons so we can articulate why some schools do it or don't. And then we can fully support our position to our community, because our community has, you know, opinions too. So I, and when we come with that package, and a lot of us do this in our regular businesses, we really dissect the pros and cons fairly and represent the facts so then everyone is better educated and we can articulate our position. Because it'll probably be a gray area and a decision will be made, but then we can kind of articulate it to community members, why, why you want this way, and the multiple work that went into it. Does that make sense at all?
Oh, yeah, absolutely, because, like I said, we researched, I reached out to ten districts and nine responded, I had four one way and five the other. And other staff members on the committee reached out and it was one yes, one no, and why? You know, the variety of reasons were, they were from, "We just have never touched it," to, "Oh, no, we would never touch that," you know? Yeah, it's one superintendent said, "Yeah, we don't do it, but I'm for it, but I'm not touching it," you know? It was all across the board. One superintendent said, "Isn't important to colleges, you know, they don't do it." Others had multiple tiers, it's, it's just interesting.
So what I've learned, when we do this, these calls, there's tons of little comments made.
Yeah.
Those are invaluable to a knowledge base.
I can put that to the other side, yeah.
That's all I was trying to say, is, or whatever your timeline is, you know, so... Because then it's, you know, affected the admin, affected the kids, affected colleges, affected funding, you know, affected the admin team, you know?
I think it's been eye-opening for the department chairs to hear, oh, the students are done someplace else, and it's, it's...
Well, that's a collaboration that you were talking about earlier, it's good.
Yeah.
We know what we know.
Yeah.
We don't know what we don't know.
Right.
Do we have anything, anything else on your report?
That's all I have.
I don't have anything. Did we have anything on the budget report?
You got it all night already.
I have one and also about the budget. Yesterday, we had an honest donor donate three hundred thousand dollars, a hundred thousand dollars for each of the next three years to go towards equipment in the fab lab tech ed. And it doesn't have to wait until the new building is up. It can go in our current shop, a hundred thousand a year for two thousand nineteen, twenty-one.
Cindy, something with, with the fab lab, Cindy with kids being served.
So that's, yeah.
Good. Outstanding. Excellent. Facilities, anything you want to talk about there?
Facilities, sure. Our state inspector came back today following up from their spring one and everything passed with flying colors. The only thing we have to send him is a report from McNeil, that McNeil inspected the flood in the chemistry room. So Rock contacted McNeil, they're gonna send him the document, and he's gonna send it to the state inspector, so good for Rock to get that out. It's nice when they can call on, say it's Thursday. So they called on Tuesdays, said, "We'll come tomorrow," and Rock said, "We're gonna concert it." So, yeah, and we don't have time, so they said, "Okay, I love it," on Thursday. And, yeah, she was here about a half hour, it was great. And then the survey, Point of Beginnings was here for three days. We haven't got the survey report back yet, but the survey has been done for the new building project, so, yeah. And then our groups met.
How many times have you met?
Three times, I think.
CPT, yeah. Yeah, so...
What, your staff did a little one?
Yeah, staffed up with architects and Byron last week, Thursday.
Have they had feedback from the staff I run into, they're excited about the project?
Yeah, it's good, it's good. And we got field trips to other schools for January eighth for the middle school, high school committee, and January sixteenth for the elementary. So it's, it's exciting times.
With no other business, I will look for a motion to adjourn and convene to executive session.
I will adjourn, meeting and start an executive session.
We'll call, we'll date.
Aye.
Here. Aye.
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 Motion carried at eight fifty-seven P.M. And we are back in open session. We'll just wait for the door to open. And I'll take a motion to approve the part-time library aide. Name is Karen Hayne.
I make a motion to approve Karen Hayne as the library aide part-time position.
Second.
Questions or discussion? Hearing now, in all favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion is carried. And then a motion to approve the elementary secretary.
I make a motion to approve Marissa Foray as the elementary secretary position.
Second.
Questions or discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion is carried. We have our regular school board meeting on January seventeenth of two thousand nineteen, and I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried at ten thirty-six P.M.